Same free play. Introduction to those present. I think we're all pretty.
Yeah.
Everybody knows everybody. All good? Okay.
Mike Wesco.
And online, we have some Zoom attendees tonight, too. So we have Nancy Marlino, Bob Shoneman, Keith is here, Rhonda Schlangan, and Deb Hawkins.
Excellent. Addition or deletion?
So we have a couple, some things rearranged. So there was an agenda item titled zoning violations in continued discussion. I had spoken with Jonas, and that was meant to be just zoning items. And that is now going to be able to be discussed. And I know Mike is here for that as well. And that is now going to be able to be discussed in the zoning administrators' report section. So that can be removed from old business, and we'll move it up earlier. And then also an executive session this evening to discuss some employee labor relations agreements, and whenever you'd like to have that.
We'll wait till the end of the meeting, I think would be appropriate. All right. Approval of minutes? Everything looked good to me. How about everybody else?
Yeah, I'll hopefully approve the minutes.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried. Pre-requested?
So Mike Wesco wants to be a part of the discussion this evening. But is that okay if you're, when we talk about all of it later?
Yes.
In a little bit? Okay. Sounds good. So Mike just has some items tonight.
Do you hear any announcements?
I don't think so. Nothing from me.
So I guess around to zoning administrators' report.
All right.
Excuse me?
Well, I just wanted to welcome Rich back. It's really good to see you.
Well, thank you.
I've been looking. You know, we just met, right? Just, I just couldn't believe it. Good to see you back.
It wasn't on the schedule. It wasn't planned, so.
And we're also welcoming Keith back on Zoom.
Yes, and welcome back, Keith.
Yeah.
Yay. Oh, Rhonda's clapping through Zoom. This is just a whole new experience for all of us. This is good. Okay, so for the zoning administrator tonight, Jonas is at a DRB meeting in Castleton, I believe. But we did talk, and he wanted to let me know that there have been four recent permits that he's approved for a new home, a porch, a garage, and a home occupation. And if anybody has questions about those, you can be in touch with him. So in relation to the ongoing discussion with the permit for Rob Lee Farm, I know there have been some letters back and forth from Jonas to Mr. Wesco with, due to your requests. So, but this is what Jonas had to offer, and he invited me to read it. So, "The permit 2008-01 is not in the 2008 permit file where it should be. However, I believe that I retrieved either permit 2006-05 or 2008-01 from an attorney involved with this case some time ago. I'm not sure which one, but whatever one it was, I shared it with Mike a while back. I have to check my email history file and also speak with the attorney involved in that case. With respect to a late-August letter the board, he shared with me regarding alleged zoning violations, I responded to Mr. Wesco and also sent a copy to the board. With respect to the conditional use permit question, there is suggestion that the 2008/01 permit might not be valid. The following information is stated as the following. Permits issued can be appealed within 15 days of the permit approval date. So if the 2008 permit was not appealed in a timely manner, then that time has come and gone. I would be glad to issue that decision so that you can then, that he can then appeal my decision as well to the Development Review Board. Unfortunately, at this time, this is not a Select Board decision. All appeals must go to the Development Review Board, and they have had to hold a hearing, and they have, they have to hold a hearing within 60 days of the appeal of the ZA's decision. Mr. Wesco is more than welcome to ask for documents from the Select Board and the zoning administrator, but the Select Board cannot act on any request to repeal or find a zoning violation at this time. I came in on Monday to go through two more file drawers and could not locate the 2008-01 file. Like I said, I will seek out the attorney that was in the case over a decade ago. There are at least four boxes to go through in addition to two more file drawers, so I will work on that, and he's going to try to log in if he can." So, that is the update from Jonas, and it's very hard to talk loudly in a mask for a long time. So thank you for bearing with me on that. So. I'm out of here. So, that's, that's the culmination of what I have to offer. So, thank you.
I, I hope Jonas would be here because I'm, he did send me a certified letter which I received Friday of last week, which, to be honest with you, is quite confusing. I'll read part of it. I don't know if you have the letter that he sent.
Yes, we do, yes.
So, I'm going to jump down. "My determination that allegations two, three, and four are without merit, and he finds no evidence." Did he look for any evidence? Did he talk to anybody? He certainly didn't contact me. Okay? The allegation of the 200-foot setback from property lines, and Rich is here this evening. He did walk the property. It's very evident that a 200-foot setback from property lines has been violated. So if he finds no evidence, I'd like to know where he did look. That's just one example. So, I look at this as, what are we, the taxpayers, paying him for if he's just going to kick it down the road to the Development Review Board? He's not going to seek out the information that he should be to make a determination? His first question, and my first allegation is, "I'm requesting to see maps that Rob Lee Farm submitted under 2006 permit." His response to that is, he wants me to provide documentation to him to show when extraction was completed. The two are not tied together. So I am confused with this. And I will be filing an appeal. None of this makes sense. First time I've heard what Kristen just read about the 2008 permit. His statement of a 15-day waiting period is nonsense. Read the timeline that I gave you. It was never warned. How could there be a 15-day period? It was turned in the very next day. Act 250. It's what it says, "Received 12508." There's, there's nothing here that explains any of the things that have gone on with this pit. I'd like some answers. I'm, I'm looking, and I'm requesting. I have been since October of last year, and I've gotten nothing so far.
Mike, if I may. What was the, in reference to the Fred Stone property line variance? What was that in regards to?
I could answer that if you'd like. Now, I have a copy of it probably here. In 2006, Rob Lee Farm applied for variance of the 200-foot setback from the town of Paulette for the Sheldon pit. That variance was granted. That's the only reference in the 2006 permit about any variance for any setback. And the town does not have the right to grant variances for adjoining landowners. Only for the town road.
Yeah, I saw it in there. I didn't, I didn't know what that was in reference to.
And there are so many discrepancies in everything that 2006 permit is posted in the annual report, but it's never signed. 2008 permit is signed, never posted. Confusing, say the least. Leads a lot to be thought about, I guess is the way I'll put it. So, my next question is to the board, because I don't know the answer to this. Maybe this isn't the right question for the board, is, if I appeal this nonsense that's here from zoning administrator Rosingfall to the Development Review Board, does the conflict of interest and ethics policy apply across the board for all boards within the town? I believe it does.
Because what you're saying is that Keith is on the DRB board.
And, yes, and then there's another member who's on that board who's a purchaser of goods from that sand and gravel pit. So you're down two members already. The other three, I don't know what their backgrounds are, whether they know. What happens then?
There's three people in.
There are enough, enough other, pending, if I, sorry, if I may. Pending, there's no other conflicts with the remaining members. There would be enough members remaining.
So you could do that with three members, huh?
Yes, yeah, three members is a quorum. So as long as there's at least three, they would still be able to meet while the other two recuse themselves. And then, if that continues, and there's a determination that more than two have to, or should be stepping away, then we would, I would, that's something that has been uncharted. So we'll have to look for the answers for that.
Yeah, and, and in all reality, there's a, there's a map of, a surveyed map of my property corner done by Ray Page, Vermont Survey Consultants, with his stamp on it hanging in that room. His office there can find no evidence. I don't get it. What are you paying them for? What are we paying them for? And it took, what, six weeks or eight weeks to get to this point?
So I guess I have a question about how the DRB process works. When the DRB hears an appeal like this, do they then go do a site visit like how the BCA does?
Yes, they would go do a site visit, have a meeting, do a site visit, and then generally they have another meeting.
And would both parties bring evidence like they did for the BCA as well? So Mr. Wesco would bring his evidence to the board, and Jonas would bring his evidence to the board as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The other question which I can give to you, and I'm sure that you could pass on to him, is, I think it was two meetings ago, four weeks, he was supposed to ask Act 250 to get a complete set of plans since the town doesn't have it for the 2008 or the 2006s, whether he's received those or asked to get them yet? Maybe part of Jonas's confusion is that he doesn't realize that there's multiple pit sites on this Act 250. You know?
We can pass out the information to find out if he has yet to receive those printed plans.
All they had to do was ask. There's some information from Act 250. It just says on the last Friday. Jonas wants to say that there's no erosion coming out of the pit. It's stated right there. It's part of their AOD negotiations right now. So where did he go to get information then? That he couldn't find any?
Would you like me to give this to, a copy to Jonas? Or would you like me to hold on to it?
Um, yeah.
I'm happy, I, I'm happy.
I think I have a copy for him in here that has other things attached to it.
Okay, I'm happy to.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Yeah, because his first question about my allegations is about the completion of extraction. And again, the information I'm providing is actually response from their attorney, Sue Seglowski, to Aaron Brondike of Act 250, says right in there, back in 2017, that the DAM pit has been substantially completed, which it wasn't. So as, as you can see by reading both of those, the two simpler ones for me, that information isn't coming from me. That's from a state official with Act 250 and a state licensed surveyor.
So with, in respect to what we can do, is that the next course of action for you to get answers is to appeal to the, to the DRB. The Select Board doesn't have any jurisdiction.
Who do I actually give that to? Since the chair has to recuse himself as far as I know.
Probably the co-chair. You'd send it to the, co-chair is, uh.
I'll, I'll.
You'll look into that some?
Yes, I will, yeah.
Thank you.
Jonathan, is Jonathan the co-chair?
I believe so, but I'm not confident. I think it might be, it's either James or John.
James or Jonathan.
So, I'm, I'm. Jonathan White.
Jonathan White.
I think that was the name I saw on the.
Yeah, and so I will confirm that. I don't want to just, before I'm confident, I don't want to just spew.
I'd like to get that to him before the end of the week.
Oh, yeah, I'll have it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
For tomorrow or latest Thursday.
You have written an appeal?
Not yet.
Okay.
I will be.
Do you have anything else to add tonight, Mr. Wesco?
Just my frustration with everything.
So this will go to the, to the channels that were created through the systems and, uh.
Yeah, I understand that. We'll follow the legal process.
Continue to, to follow and, and go from there.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
And if I may, Mike, just one, I just feel it's important to add because I know it was a concern earlier down the road. The Select Board is being kept in the loop for, you know, when things are coming through, as far as I'm aware. So I just think that's an important add, that everybody knows that the Select Board is being kept up to speed and informed on what's been going on, and is just acting as best they can on what they can act on, so.
Could you send me what Jonas had you read? Because that, I didn't hear, I haven't seen or heard anything from him other than what you just spoke about tonight.
Sure, yes, yes, I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Planning Commission. Do you have anything?
No, we're, next week is our meeting.
Next week your meeting, okay. So you're off to help tonight. Road Foreman's report. Does anybody talk with the road, Keith, uh, Frank?
Uh, I believe we're going to have, is it Green Mountain Power is coming next Monday?
Yes, we are going to have a representative from Green Mountain Power at the Planning Commission meeting in order to update us on the current state of the grid here in Paulette.
Whether or not we can take additional capacity.
Right.
Or not.
Also whether they plan to upgrade.
Overall energy plant protections.
Okay, thank you.
So I could add, add a little to this if you want. So I talked with Dale this morning. They've, uh, over the last week, they've hauled a bunch of stone into spots where they've needed it on the back roads, um, done some spot grading. Uh, they're working on a turnaround. I think it's up on the, on this.
Red top.
Yeah, red top. I'm not sure where that is, but they're, they're working on widening a turn, widening a turnaround there for the plow truck this winter. And then next week, they're going to hopefully start mowing the road sides and, um, you know, work on, all the, all the winter sand is up. And, um, grading is going to start within the next couple of weeks, throughout the whole town, the entire dirt roads, so. And I don't know if you want to talk about, I met with Keith there, uh, this morning, too, in regards to the stormwater project down in West Paulette. You want to save that for a different time?
No, that's all under this, I think.
So we've been talking about the stormwater project. And there's two projects. This is from Keith. He went down, measured it up this morning, the pipe that's going to be needed and the DI boxes for the, both projects. One is the New Street project, and the other is Bruce Surjane's. Uh, so he drew it up and measured the pipe. Um, so this is the Surjane project. I was going to make copies, just didn't have an opportunity to, but. So the Surjane project, there's approximately $15,000 worth of DEIs and pipe, not including, um, you know, labor. But that's something that the town crew could do. Uh, that could be done next year possibly. So that's, that's the, what it would cost right now for the pipe and the DEIs. And that's three, 36-inch DEIs, which are just the storm drains. And, uh.
Before, to clarify, the Surjane project is, it's only in reference because the, the outlet would go through his property, correct?
Right, before he finishes off his sidewalk and everything, right now would be the ideal time to put it through there. Otherwise, we'd have to dig, you know, he wants to spruce the place up and do sidewalk work and work between the buildings. And right now, you know, it's all in the construction phase, so it'd be the perfect time for us to dig through there before he.
Yeah, so what exactly would this entail? Is this two culverts? I mean, I see these two lines.
So right here, uh, this is the monument.
Yeah, mhm. And that's Sir Jane's property over here.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, right here, right here. So this is the building that he'd like to, you know, do something with the rail trail. Yeah? So right here between these two buildings is the outlet we'd need to, um, use for the, for the pipe, the 18-inch pipe. So we'd have to put a storm drain here, new lengths of pipe in between the buildings. And then we'd replace the pipe across the road, put another DI in right here to catch that water that comes down the hill. And then we'd have to shoot across the road and put another catch basin in right here. So that, that $15,000 just includes the pipe and the three DEIs for this project.
So labor would be on top of that.
That's right. And ideally, we'd, we'd use, the, the town guys would be able to do this project. They're plenty capable of doing this whole thing. Of course, you know, it's going to take them some time, but they can use our equipment. Depending on what they found for rock, you know, if they found a bunch of ledge in here, then we're going to have to rent a machine, you know, with a hammer on it and pound the rock out.
Right, will they have to rip up the road for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's.
And one, and this culvert on, on this side here is that nasty hole that's in front of David Hosley's house, right?
Yes.
That everybody, that all the trucks hit.
Yeah, it really should be moved a little bit further off the road.
And that, that would alleviate that issue, too.
So that's, that one phase of the stormwater project. Then the next, um, phase is on New Street, which has been an ongoing problem for the last few years, right? So the first phase of that project, here's a little drawing of it. Right here is Dave Hosley's. Um, and the first phase is hooking onto a, a new culvert pipe, which is right here at Hosley's. Digging right up along the town right-of-way, and unfortunately, across Rhonda's, in front of Rhonda's house, because the first DI needs to go just above her driveway to catch all that water that comes down the hill.
Is this where we got a video earlier of the water coming down?
Yeah, exactly. Here is where the video was taken.
Yeah, right, in, in this whole area.
Yeah, that was pretty bad.
So that's the first phase of the New Street project, which with materials and one DI is $7,800 bucks. And that's something that Dale and Perry could do this fall. That's something they're comfortable doing. And then the second phase of that project includes three more DEIs, which will go right up this side of the road and try and catch the water up where the, the church is. There's that pavement, paved road. There's a lot of water to catch through there. There's two more DEIs besides this one. I think, well, Keith had three, but I'm pretty sure there's two. He may be able to answer to that, but. So the price for the materials there is $16,225 to finish, um, the above Park Street phase of that project. So, um, I guess, you know, one question I have is, is this phase we should do this fall? Or I'd like to see the guys do it this fall. Uh, we've already got the material. We've talked about this maybe three meetings ago. Uh, so they could do that.
Do, do we already buy these, the pipe and?
We, we, yes, we have.
Okay.
Um, and they actually just got the DEIs in today. Ferguson did.
What, what's a DI?
It's a catch basin. So.
Drop-in, Latin is the initial.
Oh, drop-in.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just a catch basin where all the water drops in, and then you got an 18-inch, 16-inch, 10-inch, whatever the, the demand is on the DI.
I was wondering, too.
So, I don't know what we all think here, what we've decided to do. I know there's some, um. Grant money. It's three? Okay, so that is correct. Um, there's some grant monies that we had gotten. I don't know if some of that can be applied to this or certain phases of it, or, um, how we would want to discuss that. But that is one place that we could use some of that grant money, if I understand that correctly.
The stormwater runoff is an eligible use of ARPA funds. So, yeah, the, the, it's on our list, the, um, survey that is going out this week. That is one of the things that's listed on there. So it could, and we can backdate the use of funds to this past March. So any of this stuff that was purchased, if it was purchased this summer, we could backdate it and use those funds for the runoff.
As of now, this, this piece plus one more DI has been purchased. But this is, you know, all these phases really need to be addressed. So I don't know how.
Mike, you sent an email about the information for that other stormwater project.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one in the town-owned parcel.
It's on that town-owned property right now, 3554. I, we both believe, um, the stream engineer, Josh, and I both believe that we could, we could accomplish it with, with the town backhoe, but an excavator would be a lot quicker. So it's one of those balancing things. It might be worth renting a machine for a short term to, to do it. It wouldn't be a very complicated job, and it wouldn't really cost much money.
This is on town property?
This is where that trailer is.
Okay.
Um, what, what Josh said in the email is, where it's breaching the bank in the very back and running down through behind, into everybody's gridges and houses down through there. If we, if we made a step in the bank so that it would act like a flood, a floodplain, so you'd have to come up about a foot above the average height and then dig it over. He, he made some sketches.
Yeah, and it said in there that any mature trees would want to be left.
Right.
And then the rest of the part that was cut out would want to be planted with like native shrubs. And suggested that we talk to the Potney Meadowwee Conservation District, because they have a lot of native plants. I was actually thinking about them because I was at the, um, that community event at the church about two weeks ago, and the, somebody from the Potney Meadowwee Conservation District was there and had a bunch of information about stream banks and things. And I asked them, you know, if there was anything we were going to do with stormwater runoff. Um, because I know they did a lot of work for us after I mean, they did a bunch of stuff regarding stormwater runoff. And if we were to do anything with the ARPA funds for that that would require their help, like with the plantings and things. And the, and, and the person who was there said, yeah, they would definitely be willing to help with something like that.
And she also said there may be grants. I don't know if I forwarded that last email or not that I got from her, and I can't. Her name escapes me right now. But she said there may be grants, but they wouldn't be available till next year. So I don't know how, if we want to hold on to this or just do what we, do what we can do and get an easement on that property and then wait. You know, maybe if we had an easement written in that property, did the excavation, and then we could apply for a grant for next year to, to complete the project, you know? But we could already get the property headed in someone else's direction.
Yeah, it would be really nice to get the property, um, sold before too long. Yeah, it would be really nice to get the property sold before too long.
Frank, you had your hand up?
Relative to Surjane block.
Yeah.
There was a steel pipe fishing game club building. Used to be an issue where the steel pipe wasn't long enough. It would build up to silt, because there was silt and gravel coming down the pipe, obviously, from the road, sand and gravel. And it would build up and create, so the water would back up and it came back under the foundation, and that's what caused it, the back foundation damage to the fishing game club building. Is that steel pipe going to be replaced with a plastic pipe all the way to the river and out further than it is now?
That's the plan.
Okay, good.
And to catch all that water, because now that we paved the road again, there's not a very high curbing there, so that that lets the water breach onto the sidewalk and then go in into the buildings and such also.
Keith mentioned in the future that it might be something that's, one of two considerations is, next time West Paulette is paved, chew up the pavement to chew the street down so you have sidewalks, or rebuild the sidewalks up so that they accommodate, you know, in the future for quite a number of years accommodate the growth of asphalt in that area.
It has a serious consideration on the price, but, Mike?
Yeah, I have a question. You mentioned Josh, the stream engineer, is that?
Yeah. Josh Carvahal is the state engineer.
That's what my state engineer, then.
Right.
Now, just out, again, out of curiosity, did he look at what you spoke about originally, Rich? The Surjane?
No, no, Josh wasn't involved in that, no.
Is that because it's not town property?
Well, it's not, you're not working in a stream bed. This is just...
Gotcha.
So he, he comes if you're working in a stream bed or...
That's all he does in a stream.
Right. He does streams, yeah. So like when we have to do...
He's not a stormwater engineer then, right?
Right.
He's a stream engineer. Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
So it seems, it seems like we could accomplish the New Street project where we could go up from, from Dave Hosley's up by Rhonda's house.
Yeah, that's, that's within reach before winter.
Right. These other two projects are really a little bit too big to try and bite off.
Yeah, before winter.
And accomplish before the weather is too questionable.
You know, one thing that may be within reach is digging between Bruce's buildings and then putting the one DI out by the road. So we're not going to dig any asphalt up. Depending on how anxious he is to get his sidewalk in, I mean, that's something that could be done. That could be done before winter potentially, or first thing in the spring when the frost is out. Then he could, once that's in, then he could do his thing.
He could be ready.
He seemed pretty keen to put in his sidewalks.
Yeah. So, you know, that's, that's another issue. So, we're short on help, so if we're going to do all of this, we're going to have to either put stuff out to bids or we're not going to get it all done. Because the town crew, we're down to two guys, and they've got a lot to get ready before winter. So, if we feel like we want to spend, you know, that's a good way to spend that, the ARPA funds, then we'll, we'll put this out to bid and have a contractor do it. That's, you know, something we need to decide.
Frank?
So, what you're saying is you might be able this year before winter time, which would maybe be good, because there's water overflowing sidewalk now, to do the river plastic pipe replacement up under the current sidewalk. With a new DI there, it would pick that up at least for this winter and have that part done, and then you can move from there across the road at point.
Right, and then Bruce can do his phase, you know, whatever he wants to do there.
Make sense?
Uh, but, but between that project and the New Street project, you know, getting that one DI in over there on the New Street project and solving that issue, was that, that's a really big issue that needs to be addressed. I mean, our guys aren't going to have time to do both of them. So if we decide we're going to do both of them, we're going to have to farm some of this out to some contractors to get it done before winter.
So they could do one of them though, if you're thinking?
Yeah. They're comfortable with this one.
Okay.
Which, this is a sizable project, but they could, you know, they could go down through and this, other than they may run into some ledge in that area. And if they do, then we're going to have to get a hammer and an excavator and pound the rock out. But they're comfortable, Dale and Perry are comfortable with this, this piece. You know, they're not going to be digging through any asphalt, any concrete. This one here, you're going to be messing with some asphalt right here, which isn't the end of the world. But they've got a lot of other things to get ready before winter too.
Would we have time to get, to get a bid for that and then to approve the bid and then to get it done before the freeze?
Depends on how busy all the contractors are.
I think, we'll see. I mean, they've been pretty busy for the last year or so.
Yeah. I mean, we could ask a few, I mean, and find out, you know, what their schedule looks like and... Yeah, I mean, they could get that done before winter. And we're not going to, hopefully frost doesn't set in before the middle of December. So, yeah, that's, that could be done. We've got the DI for it. So do you want me to contact some contractors and see? I mean, we also need to make sure we have enough money in the budget for this if we don't decide we're going to use the ARPA funds before we go any further. So if we want to decide that...
But for right now, I think we could, we could certainly plan on doing this project. We could get the guys kind of, their head directed at that project to go from Hosley's to Rhonda's house. And then, and then that gives us a little bit of window. You can reach out to a couple contractors and see.
See where they're at.
Just...
I don't see a problem with requesting some bids for, and, you know, see if they have time.
Even, even if we could just do a little fishing to say, hey, you know, this is a project we got, what do you, what do you think? Give me some kind of budgetary number, and then we'll see if it fits our schedule, then we could go for an actual bid or something like that, you know?
Get a handle on the budget.
You know, just, just to compare, say, oh, you know, it'd be 15 grand to 15 to 20 grand, you know, just give a window so that, you know, that they wouldn't be affecting their bid at all, but just, you know, just kind of, ah, you know, because they, they could have a pretty good idea before they even ran their numbers, kind of what range they would be in.
Now, you've got, you've got basically the top, the middle, and the bottom phases of it.
So there's, there's Bruce Surjane phase, which is the monument.
The bottom, right. The, the end of it.
And then, and then there's two phases on New Street.
This, this one on New Street doesn't go across the road there.
It, right, we're not, so...
This one here is going to go across in the fire department.
It's all, it's all new pipe underneath the road.
Yeah. And that goes, and that goes across the fire department, not the other over by Bruce for Surjane.
That's correct, right.
So they're, they're basically two different outlets.
So my concern is if we speed up the flow of water on New Street, will the exist, and we don't do the middle phase, which is across the fire department.
Where are we going to speed the water up?
No, this, this...
If you put a storm drain in up above Bruce Kramer's and Patsy Kramer's across the road...
Yeah, and catch it before it turns into a tyrant.
Right, but you're, you're going to speed up the flow of it down to that culvert.
We're going to speed it up inside a piece of pipe.
Right, but will the existing culvert there, if we don't replace that, will that handle the water?
This, this one that goes across was put in large. There's a, there's a DI right in front of the old firehouse building there, and that's a pretty big tube that goes from there.
Right, I just wondered if we, if we didn't finish it, if that would be a hindrance by...
No, because if you finish it...
They're never going to tie in each other.
When you finish it, you're going to have three more DEIs going into the same piece of pipe.
Going up, right.
And it's still going to go in there. None of that water's ever going to go over Sir Jane's, the culvert. We're going to do a Surjane. So is everybody okay with kind of directing them to go that direction? Frank?
Additional thought is that ledge is all over West Paulette. It might be wise to drop some sort of, you know, spike in to see if the ledge is there and what depth. If it's a problem, then that's very, very expensive. And what might be an alternative is there is a sewer line that goes down that area where they dug it out once, and so it'd be soft material where that sewer line is. You wouldn't ever go down as deep as the sewer pipe. So could you put a pipe in, into that soft stuff? Where, and where does that line run, where it might be cheaper?
My understanding is, a meeting with Keith down there, is it runs down the center of the road in that area somewhere. The pipes come out of the house, and then they drop down into, into that. So we'd be digging all the asphalt up. I think the best risk is start at Dave's, dig up through there. If we hit some ledge, we get a hammer, you know, and hammer our way up through there. And the first DI is going to determine the elevation of that pipe anyways, because that first DI is going to have to sit down so it's flush with the top of the ground. So the outlet of that is going to determine how deep we have to dig.
Unfortunately, it should be slate that you hit and not asphalt.
Sheely, right.
It shouldn't be ledge, yeah. It should be, it should be slate stone.
You're going to be slate just close to the top, so it doesn't, the, the top of slate, as you well know, when you start digging it with, with an excavator, will, will break for a ways down because of the water and the heat, the freezing thaw process. We probably won't get below the frost line anyways. I would be surprised if we got below the frost line.
Yeah, I don't think so, no.
That would be free-footed.
That was the problem with Paulette, right, is that nobody could put in a septic tank because it was all rock. It had to go down to the river, and that led to the sewer pipe work, you know?
Right, and hopefully, we're not, we don't have to go nearly as deep as burying a septic tank.
Right. So I would think probably within three feet, we should be able to get most all of that from surface, I would suspect.
Yeah, and it drops right down pretty good off this side of the road. I mean, you could put a fair amount of cover through here. We'll just have to talk to Rhonda and let her know what our plan is.
Right.
She's got nice, you know, nice flowers through there. We could probably tuck up as close as we could to the edge of the road.
Right. A little bit of consideration should work out fine on the front side. So, we could talk to the guys and get them thinking about that.
And we do have all these materials for that project.
That, wouldn't be, we wouldn't be laying out anything for that. Maybe a little bit of material to backfill it or anything like that.
And it's nice that we can go back with the ARPA funds on anything that we've purchased, so we can decide that down the road. Look at the budget and see where we're at and go from there.
I have something else for you that is within the same roads topic, but a different topic, so, if you're ready for it.
Okay.
Stephanie Borke, Bork, from the Regional Planning Commission is wondering if there's been any formal decisions made about the grants and aid project, which I'm guessing based on this conversation, there is, but I do feel like we should communicate that. Because...
That was the project on Kelly Hill Road?
That was the project on, the grant-funded project that it had been, as of a couple of weeks ago, it had sort of been determined that the two-man team wouldn't really adequately be able to complete that. So I reached out to see if there could be an extension granted, and there's not any opportunity for extension at this time. So, the team there is offering to help Paulette determine if there's an opportunity to pivot to still be able to pursue that grant funding. But either way, I just feel like we should...
Pursue it as far as next year or...
For this year. So we, if the, if the town wants to get the funding that we, is set aside for us for this year, it has to be completed by October 31st.
That's a tall order.
Yeah. So if, if it's something that is completely, you know, they're aware of the fact that it's something that might be a struggle, and so I think that they're just curious as to whether or not they can expect any completion or whatnot. I just think, I had reached out to them inquiring about it, and she was following up. So, that is something I'd be happy to follow up with her about if, if you...
If I explain to them what our conversation about trying to bring enough help in to pull that project off would probably not be cost-effective.
It costs us more than we would get.
Right, than we would, they would get, so, so...
So I would be happy, do you want me to...
Sure, but I, I don't see any way we're going to be able to do that this year. We'll have to get, reapply for a grant to do it hopefully next year or something.
So I'll communicate, I'll include the two of you were on that email chain, so I'll just keep including you on that. And if any questions come up, that way you'll be able to see that. And then Keith just did make a note that Rhonda is here this evening in the Zoom meeting. So, Rhonda, if you have any questions, let us know. Thank you, Keith. I don't know where to look. I have my control station. And then, just a friendly reminder, we're at 7:50, so, keeping us on.
In the mower.
Okay, so there's a couple...
Misplaced the one from Fairfield.
Yeah, I don't know where the, well, either way, we got a price from Salem Farm Supply, and we had gotten a price from Capital Tractor, and they were both hundreds of dollars more than Fairfield. Fairfield was by far the best price on the blower. Salem Farm Supply was 6,100. And then, one other thing that popped up is we're going to need, we've got a two-way radio and every piece of equipment that we've got for the guys in case something happens when they're, they're out and working. So, just looking for approval to purchase a two-way radio to install on the tractor. And then Dale had mentioned something about mowing ahead signs. I don't know if that's something we don't have.
I think Dave always carried them, so he put them up in the stretch. He, he moved the signage as he was...
Okay.
As he was mowing a different stretch of the road, he put them, he'd move the signage, and I think that's very, very appropriate to have that. That's a good, good, good idea. So we'll have to look into that too. Couple of big signs.
So either I could have Dale get some prices on these.
The two-way radio.
Just make a motion to get it.
Yeah, we already have a brand that we're...
Okay.
...in style and stuff, so, pretty much the standard one that he has on the tractor.
It'd be nice to know, and actually, both of those things, two weeks wouldn't really make a huge difference if we, if we had some kind of budgetary numbers going into those. A two-way radio installed in the tractor.
Yeah, so we'll get prices on those two things and bring it back to the meeting. Now, they are going to start mowing next week, so I don't know what we're going to do about that if we don't...
That could be...
Men working time.
There's a good, there's a good chance that if they can find some signs that they could get quickly, you know, they could just check with us and say, oh, they're only 800 bucks or something like that. And a couple of us could just kind of give them the approval on that. That's, we've done that before. Something that wasn't exorbitant purchase, you know, that we could just feel that you just need and you could just react to, so... I think that would be the best course for that. Kristen?
So just two comments from the, from the virtual audience. Keith said that it's not too soon to talk to contractors about next spring's work. Availability of material may be a problem for this fall. So, something to consider there. And Rhonda added that there's no questions about the project. She can replant flowers compromised by the project and appreciate the work on the street. If she has a heads-up before starting the project, she'll move plants as needed, and thank you.
Perfect.
Following up, rounding the bend on that. Okay, good.
So then the other thing that we had, did you have anything else, correct?
Uh, just the blower and the radios and signs, so...
So the best price for that blower was 5,200 or something from HP Fairfield from... We got other prices which were definitely quite considerable more, so... And there's money available, and the benefits are huge. I can, I can attest to that because there's, there's several big balls of leaves and dirt along my road from, you know, and right, already at this point, the leaves are, the leaves are huge on the road, so...
We need a motion to purchase that.
Dale, Dale did state that even the competitors said that their, their machines won't compete with the... That's the best of the best.
The Buffalo turbine blower.
Yeah, probably a motion. Um, I'll move then that we purchased that blower from Fairfield, was it?
Yeah.
HP.
The second?
Also.
Double second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period.
Cool.
And then the other thing you can, is the information that I got from Josh about making that little step in the bank there. Maybe we could get some idea if we thought we could pull that off too. But it would be nice to get that, that property back on the tax rolls. But it would, I think it would be a benefit to, to do that little improvement. John?
Does that, creating a bank or a step narrow that property up?
It, it would probably narrow it a little bit in the back, but I, I think he was... It, it would probably narrow it a little bit in the back, but I, I think he was only showing like about 10 foot wide or something.
Okay.
You know, it wouldn't, it wasn't going to be a very huge flood plain to, to accommodate what the culvert could accommodate. There's a couple of big mature trees in there. It's, it's kind of just like, really just digging the bank back. But the only thing we can't do is you can't dig it out and cast it on the, on the lawn, because then that would, that would affect it. If it did breach the new wall, then it would push it over a different way that it never went before. So, but I think that, you know, if we did nothing more than, but did go in there and then just start slightly above the, the water line and, and, and dig the bank back like he showed, it can only be beneficial and, and just, we probably would be the best thing if we kept some type of easement on that property so that we can maintain that ditch as needed, since, since we have the opportunity to do that now.
Good.
You could make a motion and approve, obtain easement right now and go away or working on it.
Yeah, okay. So when we get, when we get time to, to go through the rest of it, we should, we should do that, and as we get close to everything, finalizing all the documentations before the sale, we'll, we'll have to make sure that we, we, we put that in, so, thank you. So that's about all I had for road work stuff. Everything else is, is all good? Good to see Keith at the meeting, so. Assessors' report?
No report submitted to me this evening.
Deb's report, please.
Uh, Deb, do you want to give your report, or do you want me to read it for you?
Um, I can, I can talk.
Cool.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I, you were very loud, but now I've turned you down slightly, so you're good.
Okay. Um, there's only a couple things on my report, the first being that I will be at the Vermont Hall.
Oh. Hello?
All good?
Oh, yeah, keep going.
Okay. Um, that, um, tomorrow, I'll be heading up to Lake Morion for the Vermont Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association annual meeting. So I'll be there most of the day tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. This will be my last time going as a board member. I've been on the board for many, many years and have learned a lot from a lot of town clerks. So one thing that we, I'm hoping will be brought up, Will Sen from the Elections Division will be doing a presentation to update us on some election laws. Some of the laws that were put in place for COVID last year have been implemented and will be a, a permanent fixture. But one thing I need the board to be thinking about is that last year, there was provisions made in the election laws to forego signatures on petitions. I already had a request for an appropriation and they're asking questions, and I put them off. I told them, you get a chance to go to this meeting and then have some dialogue with the selector on whether or not you will require signatures on appropriation requests. So I'm just putting a bug in your ear about that. I will ask questions at the conference in as much as the Elections Division will be there and just kind of get a feel for what, what's going to happen with that. The other thing is that, and this is mostly for Jessica, but also for the board, everything is in place at express copy to get the ARPA survey out to all of the registered voters. I think that will be going out within the next couple of days. I think that's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me?
Just thank you, Deb, for getting that survey out. I really appreciate it. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, also, thank you. Have a good time at the conference.
Well, it'll be, it'll be stressful, I think, because we've had to put all of the protocol into place, social distancing, masks, eating by yourself, so we're going to be as careful as we can be.
Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good to see you, Rich.
Oh, thank you.
Town Treasurers' report?
Julie, do you want to take the mic, or you want me to do it?
I actually didn't bring it. I'm just here in case there's questions.
Okay, um, I gotcha. So the Treasurers' memo for this evening, there are two warrants this week. The payroll for this period was $8,607.75. Accounts payable was $1,092,846.72. The general fund monies, $1,072,727.19, and this includes the first half payment to the Meadowee School District Highway, which is $26,233.30. Waste water, $293.23, and ARPA fund of $2,275. Tax collection went well, but I have not yet had the time to go through the numbers to report to you, and this will be on next meeting's agenda. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack.
So, I think we've got to recognize that Green Mountain Power for Bruce Gump Pump, I think should say...
You're Scrooge Gump.
Like Forrest.
Forrest Gump.
Forrest's brother. Yeah, it's Bruce.
Spruce Gump Pump Station.
Do you hear that, Julie?
Get that?
Yeah.
Gump.
Gump.
Good catch, John. All right. Did everybody look everything over in advance? Are we all happy with the warrants?
Yes.
Tell me why to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept, to sign the warrants, the two warrants.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Curried. Anybody have any questions for Julie from her report?
Nothing this, next time.
Health officer? Nothing this month. Waste water?
So there was an email that came from Jill last week.
All right, yeah.
Um, would you like me to read it?
Please do.
So, first of all, thanks to Mike Beecher for fixing the mower. With sharpened blades and a good cleanup, it's working much better now, so well done. Here are the Polat wastewater treatment facility DMR submission files for August 2021 and the Vermont Utility Management Services updates at the end since August 1st. If anyone knows of a local person who may be interested in working part-time for VTUMs at the facility, we are looking for a capable person who would be happy working an hour or so each day on the weekends, which is Saturday and Sunday. Please share their contact with me if you know of anyone. So if anyone here knows of anybody, you can contact me and I'll pass the word along. Future priorities RFQ, Jenny Oster should be sending over a proposed scope and fee in the next few weeks with recommendation to apply for RD program in December of 2021 for the bond vote in March of 2022. These projects will happen in fiscal year 2022, beginning soon and wrapping up before the cold weather comes. First one is scheduling replacement of air valve near end of Forest Main from Spruce Gump, spruce, sorry, Spruce Gump Pump Station. Now that's in my mind. Schedule Spruce Gump Pump Station repair and replace pump number one. Schedule a jetting of the collection system to get rid of solids building up to prevent future unwelcome clogs. Install of new hose bib faucets, and most are broken slash leaking on the inside and outside of the facility. As always, please let me know if you have any questions, and that is submitted by Jill Marsano, who's the owner and president of Vermont Utility Management Services. So that's all. Thank you.
And, oh, that reminds me, she called me last week, this, I gotta get back to her. We were just, just catch up, but nothing, nothing major going on, so. That's it?
Yes.
Older unfinished business?
I don't, so they, so they didn't need any help stuffing envelopes after all?
No. It turns out that they were going to send it to an all, all-service center.
Okay.
Who can do it all right there.
Very good.
And in fact, and Julie inquired with me, the funds for sending out the survey, luckily we can use the ARPA funds to send out the survey to find out what we want to do with the ARPA fund. Yeah, administrative stuff related to administering these funds is covered under the funds ourselves. I do have a little bit of update on a couple of the grant things we were doing. Does that fit in old business?
Sure.
Okay. Um, we were going to do the Brownfield study on the old Dutchie's Building lot. I heard from Ed Bove at Rutland Regional Planning Commission that they now have the money to do it this fall, so they just need to go ahead. So we, we determined we wanted to do that, so I'll just tell him that he can, yeah, okay. Um, the other thing is I've been working with Amanda from Rutland Regional Planning Commission on the municipal planning grant, which would be for figuring out what to do with that lot, and also sort of a generalized West Polat, what do they call it, like a village, a village center plan, just to plan out that, that area. And she sent me the draft of it and has some questions for me to send back to her about it. The only things that I want, would need to bring to the, I can answer some of them myself, but would we want Rutland Regional Planning Commission to basically work with us and be the grant managers for this grant? I would assume yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's what my opinion would be.
Yeah, and we've done that, I think, in the past with other grants. So, so that answers 4.1. The other thing also is if we have any positive outcomes to report from prior funding in the past decade, for those of you who've been on the board longer, have we gotten any municipal planning grants in the last decade that we had positive outcomes from?
Don't really think we've got any.
I know we applied for one a couple of years back and didn't get it, because I heard about that. Okay, well, if we don't have any, we haven't gotten any, so. All right, um, yeah, that pretty much covers those.
Okay, great.
We had something of a grant where we had a person show up years ago to help Plan Commission with the process, maybe in two separate situations. I wasn't on the Plan Commission then, but I think that was funded through a grant.
Was it the bylaws update?
This, bylaws and also subdivision cluster development directions changes to planning, you know, and that was done through Rutland Regional Planning.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any more older unfinished business? New business?
So I have two things. Deb just wrote, she forgot to mention, that there is a Robinson Hill Road resident that had some concerns regarding to visi, with regard to visibility going off of Robinson Hill Road onto Route 133. There is some overgrowth and a dead tree which causes motorists to have to creep out onto Route 133. Deb has notified V-Trans and they are going to look into it, but she just wanted to let the board know. And the other thing that I had, so there was an email that came in that I wanted to just send to you all regarding, there are some surveys that, for municipal input that different organizations are looking for, so I'm just going to be sending the board some links to these. I don't know if anybody wants to go through them, or if you'd want me to go through them. One of them's from the Cannabis Control Board regarding different municipalities and what their thoughts are with taxation and whatnot. And I know since Polat had that on our most recent ballot, that might be something that somebody wants to go through, so just heads up. That's my, for, keep your, keep your eyes on your emails, and if you want me to go through anything, just let me know. That's, I think, all I had for new business.
Anything else under new business? Okay. We got public comment. Does anybody have any public comment? Did Judy leave a letter here for public comment? I thought she, I thought I heard she was. Frank?
I see that Jonas is present?
Yeah, I...
Is there anyone who want, do you want to have dialogue or clarification of anything that was discussed when he wasn't available?
He's nodding his head.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
I don't, I think just listening in. Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry, I assumed if you had any questions of my report, that's why.
No, I, just the four, the four permits that you issued is all, all for this month, Jonas?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Martha?
Watch the cords, Martha.
I think it's Judy's letter.
Okay.
It was supposed to be a copy for you.
Okay. I see it's an email saying that she was going to leave a letter.
So I don't, are we reading letters?
This is a, a letter petition for the monument on the green. Hi, Mike, Bob, John, Rich, and Jessica. We're writing regarding concerns that we have pertaining a petition we understand to circulate and asking the select board to finalize an approval to go forward with a monument on the Polat Green. We have not been asked to sign the petition, but have been involved in a number of conversations pertaining to it. We have seen a photo of the proposal. As long as residing people on the street and neighbors to the green, we feel that we should weigh in on the subject. Please let it go on record that we are not in any way in support of another monument being placed on the beautiful open green space, mainly due to its size, but also because there's already a monument there, which the select board had a part in placing, which reads "In memory of all veterans of all wars," which we believe says it all. Since we moved here 50-plus years ago, we have enjoyed watching the many activities which have taken place on the green. Most of them involve children and on the open space to run and play. We found memories of the schoolchildren, most especially watching them raise and lower the flag. A big deal to be a third grader and given the honor of this task. Since school has become a library, there has been outdoor programs for kids, pep parades, summer day camps, and wonderful Halloween parades. The Easter egg hunt always drove such a big attendance. We had to use some Arlon and channels along with the green. Art on the green, concerts and pittnicks to come, and most recently, we have seen the ladies from the town office enjoying their lunch on the benches. the ladies from the town office enjoying their lunch on the benches. There has been, then there's the issue of parking. As we all know, our streets is busy, and parking is often at a premium. Sometimes we can barely get over our own yards. More traffic to view a monument means more congestion. Also, could the town be faced with liability if someone climbed and fell? We presently have five war monuments in the town of Pollet, two dedicated to the Revolution, two dedicated to all who served in various branches of the military, and the one mentioned above. Though the Revolutionary Monument in front of the North Pollet School needs a good cleaning, which is on the radar, and traffic and parking are sometimes an issue, if a group of people wanted to visit with a bit of notice could be addressed in the help of the constables and the fire departments in this beautiful monument engraved with some history of the encampment in the area, along with how it was procured, we remember well the dedication of this monument, as some of you also may well. A Revolutionary Monument is here in the Village by Machesney's Real Estate Office. Though we have several monuments, that's not to say there couldn't be another one, but in one or the other locations in the town that we know have been suggested. It has been said that the Revolutionary War enthusiasts feel the best place for the monument is on the town green. The green is only so big, and by adding another permanent structure to it, it's going to leave little space for the future generations to enjoy. Please do not allow this to happen. We encourage that you, as you are driving down our street to your meeting, will gaze ahead and see what a beautiful view we have, and then think, "Do we really want to see anything else on the screen?" Thank you so much for considering the wishes of those of us who live here every day. Regards, Judy and Bud. That's read. Is there anything else in public comment that anybody wants to share tonight with me at this meeting? Martha?
I know you're going into executive session, so I would just like to leave for the five of you a letter written by Bob and me, also about the village green. It doesn't need to be read aloud. It's really just some background information that you can each read at your own leisure. I'll leave it to Kristen for now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for paying attention to letters.
I'll pass these out to you all.
Frank?
Mike, you sense on the encampment issue, because it's so significant, it really needs a kiosk so tourists can see it and place with proper parking, everything where the tourists could be able to visit, and that would be planned out. We see what kind of detail might be wanted, and all historical society might want to be involved with that.
Thank you. All right, so we have some executive session business to address. We could go into the office in there and then come out, or...
Yeah, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion when we go into executive session.
I'll second that.
And then, for everybody who's online and everybody here, everybody can just, I'm going to put everybody online in the waiting room, and everybody can go inside to the waiting room, and if you want to come back in.
That's a good one.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. And you'll be all welcome back in if you choose to, when the time comes, so.
Aye.
Good night. Okay, hold on, everybody. Let's see.
Okay, all in favor, going into executive session?
Aye.
All right. Post, carried.
You're on. Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we come out of executive session with no decisions made.
I'll second.
Y'all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post, carried.
Okay. There's nothing else on the agenda this evening? Anybody?
I'll make the motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
Thank you.